Good evening, I'm at 6:30 so I want to officially call this meeting at the office.
Recording in progress.
Sorry, I'll people late due to order and with that, we're starting the agenda, the additions, changes to the agenda presented. Do you have any questions?
No.
Do you have approval of the agenda?
Paul's our second?
A second.
Good stuff in there. Moving the groups, we had a second agenda presented, all the board motion please say aye.
Aye.
Both?
Aye.
Thank you, motion curious. And this reminds me that Craig will be joining us through Zoom. I'm not sure about the doubt, he should maybe join us later on or whatever tonight. Thank you for joining us, Craig.
Yep, you're welcome.
Communication section. Does anybody here in the public that is here speak to anything that's not on the agenda? Here are none. We'll move on to consent agenda. We've got minutes and a couple other licenses. Any questions from Chris about any of that? Have I expanded outdoor seating for the local? That make sense in the diagram for a minute?
I'd move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
On second?
Thank you, step. Move the second agenda to approve consent agenda, all the board motion please say aye.
Aye.
Both?
Aye.
Thank you, Craig, motion curious. I'm an address person, I just walked into the room here. We got started on the agenda here fairly quickly and I went through the communication section for sending everybody to the public that wanted to speak to anything that is not on the agenda. Are you in that category?
I'm just here to listen and learn how the city runs.
Okay.
At some point I will make a comment, I'm not prepared. I'm premature from me saying anything. But I will be taking notes, thank you.
We move quickly through the open comments section here. There are no hearings or ordinance approvals, we're down to whole business, discussion consideration of site plan approval.
I would move that we remove from the table discussion and consideration of site plan approval for Mount Vernon Community School District Athletic Complex.
Second.
If you follow that, Scott. Right, more on that. First action, I'll keep them on the table, make a vote. Hear that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Both? Motion curious. Presentation, who wants to start?
So in this, in your council packet, I put together a memorandum discussing where we stood on outstanding items. First being lighting. Our code set is fairly specific, although somewhat counterintuitive. We are going to encourage the school district to go ahead and seek a variance to decrease the pole height in order to, I think, better help the residents in the area. I don't want to keep this table until they go to board adjustment to come back. I think we can move forward with the fact that we know that that's what they're going to go and seek for the various reasons. And then the calculations are there, so you can see the same thing that we are seeing.
Just a quick note on that, I think it would also not only be better for the residents, but I think it would be better for assuining the plan field.
Correct.
Which I think sometimes gets lost in the whole discussion.
Right. And I mean, the average is, I want to say sixty to eighty in height, not many above that. And again, when you start getting higher than the glare, it becomes more of an issue even with the shielding that they can do. So again, you can still approve the site plan knowing full well that they will seek variance for that. So to me, that kind of covers the lighting portion of it. Second was the access. We did have a meeting. There's two points on the access. Second, or the first point was, how would we potentially add a secondary access to the school grounds? We have received both the north-south access and then east-west access, they come with different concepts. The north-south access would likely require some sort of city involvement because it's designed to be more or less a city street. The east-west access, however, is designed probably more similar to a current functioning alley, but it's a little bit wider paved surface than a sixty-foot alley. For staff purposes, having an initial layout that makes you point back to is important. We are in any position to have a discussion on the, the north-south access actually makes more sense in a number of different ways, but the costs are significant. So there are different mechanisms in place that the city has to force that to happen. So I'm not concerned about just having it on paper and saying like this will be a future access if it's needed and necessary, which we think it probably will be. We could do that problem. So needly, we have that ability. I think for us, it was mostly to get the three entities, Cornell, the school district, and the city all down, sitting at the table saying, something's going to have to occur probably within the next, you know, three to five years in order to curtail some of the issues that they're having with singular access into the complex. So that was kind of the first portion of it. The second portion had more to do with parking in Stone Brook for emergency vehicles. And again, the recommendation's going to be from city staff that we use temporary signage, similar to what we did with Cornell. If, in fact, the number of events that occur at this facility necessitate more permanent signage, we would address it. Actually, we would address it, we'd have the school district address it with neighbors, and then we could implement permanent signage. But I would hate to go through the expense and the angst of putting in permanent signage before we have an identified problem. If temporary signage is going to be useful, as it has seemingly been at Cornell, then I think we're going to go ahead and just move forward with that recommendation at this point. We still have conversations about whether or not we come on third and head in that direction towards the emergency access, given the number of driveways that likely would prevent people from parking along that section of the street as it is. Or if we try to get down to public safety. So we have some options, there's things that we can do. The school districts are aware of the fact that they're going to have to be very helpful on event days. Cornell has their own public safety staff that would signage how. If at some point, they would need additional staff from a public safety standpoint, they understand that they would be responsible, similar to what they do, they are at the first street community design, if they have to have additional staff, that's an agreement that's worked out ahead of time with Chief Shannon. So again, nothing that is sitting in both of those items that really raised any eyebrows to the staff so far. And then three, our engineers' reports, I went through kind of itemized. His comments, like I said, items one, two, six, have either been addressed or additional information was provided. The elevations were included, some of the chain link fence specifications were included as well. So item seven, lighting on the trail, I suggested they remove that request. If they want to make that request in the future, that's fine, but I don't think it's part of a site plan approval to ask the council to approve that kind of expansion in the future. So I'll leave that up to the school district if they want to ask for that in their future, some sort of partnership on the trail lighting, that's fine. I just don't want to make it a part of the site plan, it shouldn't be there. And then items nine through eleven, again, were kind of general statements where we already addressed them. That's number eight, going back to access. So that is my report. Back to you, based upon some of the concerns that you raised at the original meeting, and this is where we have gotten to this point. So at this time, staff is recommending approval. I don't want to say with a stern warning, but just the general knowledge that access will have to be addressed at some point in the, in the future. And again, realizing that we will probably create those conversations as they occur, but don't necessarily want to hold up site plan approval process.
Well, I noticed that there was a public input session or something, but is that, has that happened or is that to come?
We have a here, we were going to do a public hearing regarding the project on May ninth as part of the next regular school board meeting. So at that time, we will present, we will present our latest information to the school board regarding, regarding the scope of the project, and then that would also be a time where community members could provide questions, input. We'll have people hang around afterwards to answer the questions they might have, from lighting to water retention, to whatever may be on their minds. And then if we feel that there are still, that people are still looking for opportunities to speak and ask questions, we'll set up another meeting. We'll set up as many meetings as needed to have them have the opportunity to share their thoughts and concerns.
Okay. I do feel better about it with these concessions, especially given the trail lighting issue and the Stone Brook parking. I just thought that it would be good to have that opportunity.
So yeah, I don't know if you want to talk or not talk.
I can give one as well, so.
Greg, can I get you up in the mic if we can, so Craig can hear you?
Mr. Mayor, I have a point of order on your agenda. So regrettably, the venerable Dave Ryan was in the wrong location for this meeting. But is here now, once we're here to make public comment on this topic, so.
Sure.
It's one that we started talking about.
And since it's on this topic, he would have made it now in the past. He had five more minutes, David.
Thanks for being late, it's been a couple years since I've come to a meeting, and I plan on just walking across the street. And I apologize, but I guess the public man, Dave Ryan, I've lived in this community for over forty years, and I've also been a local businessman here for over twenty-five. I have a great enthusiasm and interest in the proposed athletics and activities complex that's being considered by our community school district, and also by you or the city council. My wife and I, our parents, nine children, all who have graduated from or are currently attending the local school district, also have seven grandchildren, six of which are or will be attending the local school district. So the same to say that we are children, we follow it in athletic competitions, and we visit every school district we can, like we've been over fifty percent of all school districts in the state. Mostly for competition, competitions, but some visits have just been while traveling through other parts of the state, vacation or seeing relatives. And a quick story, my, my wife will often ask quickly from her passenger seat, where in the heck are you going now? And my response is, I want to check out the school, and I want to check out the grounds and see what's going on here. And she just smiles and shakes her head and goes right down. But regardless of the type, age, and quality of the athletic venues that we see, there are two overwhelmingly positive common threads that appear during these visits. Number one is the overall community vibe of sixteen. Number two is the apparent goodness of the volunteer spirit. Both of these things are aligned with all the most close communities. Have to say that Mount Vernon community also possesses these same attributes when we play host to athletic events in our communities. These occurrences are truly a great piece of American. All of which is why I'm so excited about the possibilities before us of a public and private partnership of community stakeholders regarding the opportunity, an opportunity that will provide a fifty-year solution for our school districts in building an outdoor athletics complex. Our uptown facility, along with the Cornell facilities, have been serviced very well for years, just, it's been a great partnership. A big tip of cap to those leaders and volunteers that love that to happen. The save the field winter campaign was extraordinary, very much needed and still used to this day. But now I believe it's time to take another step forward. Let's not forget of all the economic benefits of visiting teams and fans, social benefits of the fans, volunteers, and participants, and a potential draw for new area residents that want to be used, that want to use or be associated with the school district that has both great academics and great facilities. There's also the potential of an ever-changing and growing residential and commercial tax base that locates here because of our overall desirability and community's commitment for improvement. Now, I understand the locational challenges are many, and they're involved in this facility of its nature, and that's to be expected. Engineering, occasional lighting track, noise issues we're talking about earlier, these are all involved in any type of activity, all of which are things that can be overcome with status and unsatisfied with good decision-making and thoughtful consideration by you and our local district leadership. One last point, I'm not of the opinion that property values will be negatively impacted in residential, in residential areas very close proximity to facility such as this. I'm not of that opinion. I've grown up for thirty-five years as a community banker, both Cedar Falls and Mount Vernon, that lends money and will continue to lend on such properties that are in close proximity. We understand this type of risk very well in the banking business. And although it's true that some people do not wish to live in close proximity to our busier-than-normal town, our beautiful college, or any busier-than-normal street, or maybe our extremely handy car or restaurant, or even our well-maintained water and sanitary sewer plant, I get all of that. Not everyone wants to make those locational adjustments with their personal residence. But a large number of people will, and they're just fine with any of those locations, they'll pay typical market prices to live in a wonderful community like Mount Vernon. The same will happen with residences in close proximity to the proposed athletic complex. And it's just a matter of personal preference. I know this to be true, and I'm not aware of any factual small-town data that says otherwise. In closing, I'd like to mention that there's never going to be a perfect location that meets everyone's desires for a project like this. But putting an outdoor athletic activities complex on the school's campus, near, near more clinical parking, near our school buildings, near our restaurants, our locker rooms, it's the right thing to do every time. So thank you for being given this opportunity to speak tonight, and I wish you well in the future of the conflict, possibilities, and the challenges involved here.
So I'll just reiterate a few points from last time, and then just add a little bit of information regarding some of the conversations which you have seen going on since we last met with you in March, and do greatly appreciate the city staff's recommendation for approval of this project. First off, again, remember this is all tied to our twenty-year facilities vision for the district, and that this has not only an impact on activities and athletics, it also factors into our decision-making down the road with academics. So when we look at, again, the location of a fourth constructional building, we are looking at a location that is in the area of the current track and field over by the elementary school, because that would put that four or five building in close proximity of all the elementary and the middle school, so that there could be sharing of resources, sharing staff members, so on and so forth. So potentially down the road, we're losing that space for things like track practice. And we had somebody who's talked about, Sarah Truitt, that the elementary started out being out by the track, right, track practice last week, and talking about the hundreds of kids that were in that very small space for track. So we know eventually, eight, ten years from now, we potentially lose that spot, so therefore building this helps give us the facility we need for things like maintaining strong track program. So it is part of a larger twenty-year facilities vision that I gave to the board in two thousand seventeen, and we've been acting upon since with the passage of the bond issue in two thousand eighteen, and other things. We are slowly and maturely creating the campus of the future for Mount Vernon Community School District, and as, as Dave Ryan shared, it really is a fifty-year-plus commitment for the community. Again, I remind you, it's a community benefit, and I think that in the future, once that's piece of the puzzle's in place, I mean, and then once you have a fourth constructional building, our campus becomes an even more vibrant hub, and is really the center of activities in the community. We have worked with the neighbors throughout this process. Yes, at times they thought that we had been as transparent as they would have liked us to have been, I think sometimes that just means we're not giving them the answers we want to hear. But we have tried to listen, we've made decisions related to that, including working with Cornell College to purchase a plot of land from them, so we can move the project a little bit to the east and further away from the homes. That has been approved by both the Mount Vernon School District and by Cornell College, so we're ready to execute that contract and move the project a little bit further away from, from the neighbors. We've been very cognizant and listening to them regarding issues with traffic flow and people walking through their garbs, and really listening. We've had many internal debates about what should happen with Thirteenth Avenue especially, and parking on game nights personally. I would like to see us not have people park there. We've worked with the city to talk about the use of Fifteenth Avenue through Stone Brook as the most logical pathway for emergency vehicles and keeping that space clear on game nights. Issues like trash, we have been very diligent in taking care of that at First Street when we've been at Cornell. We don't leave, I mean, Matt and his crew, and volunteers from the student body, literally take care of trash immediately after events. And I know of no events that are going on in the district now that are causing trash to blow over into the neighborhoods of Stone Brook, despite the fact that it was something that I heard you share. Honestly, we're using state-of-the-art lighting to make sure that there's as little light as possible into the neighborhoods, and it will look a whole lot different than what you see now at First Street, and so we think that we're doing everything we can there. There's a commitment from our band people to, when they are engaged in practice, to as much as possible, practice by playing away from the neighborhoods. But the bottom line is in a lot of this is you're really not going to know all the nuances and all the ins and outs of this until you're with it for a year. And one adjustment needs to be made. We may say in year one, there's going to be no parking on Thirteenth Avenue, and we may find that that's something that really wouldn't be that big of a problem. We may find that after year one, the marketing band practice is too out, and we move them back to the practice field closer to the middle school. All those things are just going to take time to, to work out. I will say that one of the community members a couple weeks ago talked about the number of events possibly being underestimated. We have shared with the neighbors and with other groups a base calendar of what it might look like in a typical year. So basically what I did is I took all of the activities that took place in the last normal school year, we had two thousand nineteen, and I just extrapolated and put it on a calendar in two thousand twenty-three. Yes, it's busy, especially busy from about August first to November first, because then you have a lot of dead time. And then we'll have commitments to, you know, what time of day do we turn lights off, intercoms off and everything. So we are going to work with the neighbors and with the community to make sure that we are with neighbors and are not doing anything that's going to upset people. As Saturday was asking how we are doing a May ninth public hearing to allow people to continue to have their input, we will have as many meetings with people in large groups, small groups, individually, as necessary to help walk them through the process. I did want to respond real briefly to note to something that Dave shared regarding property values. I have spoken with a realtor about this, and we have talked, we, we talked about property values and everything, and I talked to an assessor as well, and both reached the same opinion, that property values are not going to be hurt by placing this activities complex in that location. As a matter of fact, it will probably cut property values. What it will impact is their personal quality of life. If they right now live in a certain place where they wake up in the morning, they need to look out into an open field, and that's very enjoyable to them, yes, they will lose that. So from a property values perspective, it will not hurt from all the people we spoke to. But we do understand the quality of life piece, but you know, for the district, this is something that we see as a major investment in the future of our district, in the future of the community, and that's the optimal location to place it at. We are ready to work with the city in the future, with the ground situation regarding signage on event nights, and wherever the future conversations go with road access, with ourselves, with the city, with Cornell, we will always be partners in that, in that conversation, and be ready to do what we need to do when the time comes. So give you a little bit more, we have specific questions regarding the things that were given to you regarding lighting and everything. Lauren Hoffman is here again, Matt Teague is here as well, so we are ready to answer your questions at the end. Craig, have you been catching all this? Just want to check in with Craig.
I heard, I heard that Mid North's a lot of glare. Still can't figure out why I can't get my picture up there, but I got me and Kathy anyway.
We, so we've shared the two emails that we've received regarding the site plan approval process. One email dealt specifically with the access point, and again, I don't have the page to even put this out there. I want to assure individuals that there are legal needs available to the city in order to make a secondary access happen. It is my sincere hope that we would never get to that point, but the fact of the matter is, as approval occurs, it's not as if the city is giving up any rights by holding the site plan until an agreement is made on a secondary access point. So by staff recommending approval of this, we are telling you that unless law changes in the course of the next five years, the city does have the means to make that particular access point happen. So hence why you see a little concern. I mean, there are answers to everything that could potentially need to be changed, as Craig alluded to, some of the decisions, recommendations that we're making on temporary signage and things of that nature, because we don't want to jump to any conclusions right now and make drastic changes or increase our budgetary amounts necessary to accommodate this without actually seeing some of this in action. And I think, I would agree in this, I, you know, there's going to be a lot more events there than, than, than is being alluded to, and I said, that's possible. You always have a, an opportunity to come back and speak to both the city and the school district if something that happens in the future would change your mindset on this. But again, from the sheer standpoint of city code, the only thing out there that I feel like we can't necessarily answer simply because it has to go to a different board, there's really no way to change that, it's the lighting. And the recommendation is to move forward with the site plan approval based upon the fact that they will seek that out. And if they don't, then Laura is already working on having B and K look at our lighting ordinance to see, you know, maybe some tweaking doesn't necessarily mean something. Yeah, you know, so, but that process itself takes a minimum of three to four months. Again, not worth keeping this table until that process is gone through, so.
You heard the staff recommendations before, that includes, from Dave?
Correct. Yeah. And again, ADON's storm water controls are better than what they are now. The, it's not necessarily if you were to take a complete virgin property and develop it, but it is going in the right direction.
So if we play out the variance for the lighting, let's say board of adjustments isn't there, now looking at changing the city public in just that timeframe, then I mean.
That still allows them to continue their design work. They have the ability to use bid alternates and other items of the nature. Again, it would be a three to four month consideration. I would say that both our engineers agree with the school district's engineer that it does seem somewhat counterintuitive how our ordinance is written specifically, so it might be something that gets changed regardless. I guess. And I believe one of the planning commission members pointed out that it was, the ordinance itself was done quite hastily as a reaction to another development that was occurring in town. So that probably would be with the city to take a look at that thing and kind of go through and make sure nothing has changed.
Mr. Hoffman, I think, answer this?
Sure.
Lauren Hoffman, a common law engineer and a neighbor, Cornell Road, West Coast. Just wanted to elaborate a little bit on lighting and then a few other action items that came of the prior council meeting. I guess what started with lighting is, can answer your question if the C, Board of Affairs. I guess what started with lighting is, can I answer your question of the C. Board of Adjustments declines? I mean, worst case scenario, we just have to go 10 foot taller holes and put another $20,000 to the project for the old pain.
And I'm just, I'm not foreseeing it, I just want to, you know, be clear about what we can be planning on.
Sure. So another question, one of the tasks asked last time was just some of the football fields, track and field projects that had 80 foot holes. I'm not sure the information is shared at council or not, but the center point of the ban, center point of the ban on Williamsburg, Mount Mercy. There's a number of other fields that have slightly shorter holes between 70 and 80, very common. There are cases that, talking with Muskoff, you know, experts in lighting design, there are some rare occasions that they go to 90 foot holes, which again, 90 foot hole would get us to meet our code. But those cases are if the pool is sitting like 10 feet below the field grid or if there's another 20 foot back from the field. But in all cases, based on our position of our field and the elevation of our holes in relation to our field, they say that these footers that they go to, and it's because it yields the least amount of light spill, like spill and glare to the front of the property, which I think is what we want. So this case, you know, context, that's the design, you're going to take in all of the factors and not necessarily just the process. Mount Mercy University isn't Cedar Rapids and they are the same, same code that we have. And there was no variance, we thought for that, we just put them in 80 foot holes and. Correct, we're not near residential property, but that again, that's really not the factor here at all, just a matter of meeting the function of that fixture. Another item, just to elaborate a little bit more, Chris's comment on the signage and that's temporary signage in the Stone Brook neighborhood, we're going to experiment for that first year. But also from that same meeting, we pegged that 10th Street coming into the school district grounds would have permanent parking signs to help alleviate congestion in that area to and from the district property. We already hit on the other action items, I don't need to elaborate those any further. I did want to talk a little bit more on the garbage component. The school district is investing some more dollars into the future system that has the closed off beat so that trash can't drop in the behind. That was Matt and his crew picking up garbage. And secondly, there's going to be a fence that basically surrounds, you know, the facility, which blowing garbage should be their separate by the fence before it goes neighboring properties. Got to mention on the lighting, with the trap component around the field, there's, you know, you've got the four poles are pointing down the facility. It'd be sensitive to the neighbors who know or will be putting the fixture, there's a lot of four fixtures that are pointing to that north radius of trap so that we can hold regulation trap meets. Those will be on a separate circuit. So in theory, if you have three to four trap events per year, that those, you know, the lighting fixtures, those four fixtures will be turned on, which do yield some additional glare. But at least it's going to be, you know, it's only going to be three or four. Otherwise, those will be shut off and they're going to be focused on the field overall.
You're talking about up where like the field events would take place?
I'm not going to say that, just getting it away, the field events will not be let to, that's the common.
That's just that north curve of traffic. Thank you.
So yeah, just sort of show, you know, the willingness of the district to be a friendly neighbor, to put that on a separate circuit, which adds the cost and just be friendly.
One way here, the last hard copy I got of the diagram here that had a second tier of parking north of the high school was the future. Did you count those slots in your account that gave us last two minutes ago?
No, those were going to be activated. So right now, they were not accounted for in that parking cap, which we got through my cap sheet quickly.
And what, 660 were, that number of 600 plus number was without the potential.
Seventy of issue.
Yeah, additional spots, which right now would go in as a bid, bid alternate, but would end up as part of the regular project.
Well, it's not part of this.
That's correct.
Yeah.
So we come in well, well, I don't want to say well, we come in below what appropriate threshold will be for spectator seats or stalls without. So that's not.
Correct. And 659 more parking spots than there are at First Street.
A couple of times in frame of motion, you're getting to that point. Do we need to put in points about lighting variance as part of motion and about timing for the access? Is that appropriate for part of motion?
No, I think the issue, number one, the variances are completely separate for us legally. It doesn't matter if we put any in motion regardless. Two, as far as the access is concerned, I don't like something that's going to involve less. Because I should clarify, under those legal means, the city would put that in and then recoup costs from other entities. So we would be essentially putting ourselves on a financial clock. And I don't necessarily want to do that quite yet either. Again, I think everybody that sat at the table is well aware of the fact that secondary access is going to be needed. There are some changes that will be made on the interior, permanent no parking on 10th and things of that nature. That will be completed as part of this and will be believed a majority of the time by school staff. So I would say that you can, it's likely that I would come back to you at some point and say, we need to move this back.
So. Good. I just want to make sure we have a solid motion, it's enforceable, but not over senior block or year.
The, everything that had been discussed up until this point are part of the minutes. It can be addressed at any point moving forward in the future. Having a part of this process, not necessarily a part of the motion, is key for us.
So speaking of the access, I mean, both options, the north-south and the east-west, seem to, if I'm reading these correctly, lie almost entirely on Cornell property.
The north-south access lies, I would say probably 80% on Cornell's property, another 10 to 15% on ours. And then it comes up to the school's ground towards the very.
I guess more to the point, are they, I mean, are they CDs? They're more with these.
No, my understanding is these would be shared with them. But again, there's more conversation that needs to happen with both entities. So the east-west access, they both bring different issues. The east-west access sits right now on a drainage ditch, which would have to be addressed as well. The actual layout could vary depending on what Cornell has planned for that future strip. So, so no, that's why, again, I don't necessarily want to put.
I'm just trying to get a sense, so like on the north-south version, there's future student or faculty housing. Did they put that in there or didn't?
It was part of the conversation that we had as a meeting. And I think the school district just put that in to show that this would be.
This, this wrote it, sir, more than one purpose.
If Cornell hadn't put housing on it, they had to have a. Yeah, so Cornell is limited in what they can do on that surface.
Yeah, it's around as well. So Smith and.
My understanding is that public will hear something about their housing plans in the near future. I think sometimes it's free, you'll hear from Cornell about their, from what they envision for student, how are they going to speak for them? But for student and staff housing, that could impact us. And we're wide-eyed to know that, especially as we continue to talk about future growth beyond this project. We know that as we talk fourth building, we're talking the need for more access and even talking about whether we could, as part of that fourth building fees, even create a new strategy for our buses and create a dedicated bus lane and so on and so forth. So we know moving forward as the district continues to grow that space and continues to add pieces, that it's inevitable that some type of additional access will happen as a partnership between these entities. So if I figure, if you figure Cornell was 80% and the city's 15%, so we'll pay 5%. I have a log record right now to say that we will take 5%.
So Scott, if I could, ironically, I remember having these same discussions with a different council member, Rose, back when we were discussing the building of the new high school. And at that time, that street was very close to being part of the plan. And it's, it's my belief, the reason that it ended up not being part of the plan is because at that time, there was no reason for parking on that side and.
And Cornell's, I know one of the numbers were different back in the day.
Right, but they were also part of those discussions. And one of the benefits to Cornell, as Matt, I think, has already alluded to is all of a sudden, that piece of property that right now has got the soccer field and open space. Now it becomes developable for a variety of things. So I think that we are going through in 2022, a lot of what we went through in 2000, 2002. And Dave, I know, you know, we've been through this together. Of course, my wife and I just sent two kids through the legacy that you did.
Yeah, I was just trying to get a sense of, you know, level of involvement and where. And I don't, you know, I don't know that these would necessarily hold anything up. I just wanted to get a feel for.
Yeah. And I think that's, that's, that's where having that historical, you know, discussion, I think, helps. Because, you know, there's a lot of new players in all of this. And so, you know, when we think about those types of things. I was thinking that as I did my homework this weekend, this was, this was quite a packet to really, you know, dig into. And I, I'm very impressed with the work that's been done by Lauren and everyone on the school district side, certainly our staff. And I'm somewhat in a unique situation because I live four blocks north of First Street. So I am impacted every time we have a festival uptown. People park in front of my house and on the side of my house. And when there are heavily attended football games, I'm impacted by parking, the traffic and all of those things. So I understand the angst of the neighbors when we talk about a project like this. I also understand the value that this type of project can bring to the community. And in many of the discussions, I, I feel like there's almost an adversarial feel. And there shouldn't be because the community school district is exactly that. It's for the community and more people than just the children that attend there benefit from it. The city of Mount Vernon, we have our borders, but we also depend upon those people outside those borders that are part of the community school district. And Cornell College is a huge asset to the city of Mount Vernon in the school district. There's been many partnerships with fourth grade friends and things like that. But Cornell College also benefits from the school district and from the city. And we are uniquely positioned to, you know, really help bring our entire community up to the level that other schools in our conference are and in our class. And I think it's just a real tribute to this entire area, the collaboration that is going into this effort and the listening and the communication. And you will never be transparent enough for someone having shed blood and tears and sweat, talking about a fire station, it almost put me, you know, under six feet. But we get through it together and I just, I am extremely proud of everyone involved.
I do want to say with regard to the neighbors that are most concerned and who have consistently shared the most concerns with us or the newspaper article with the city council. They are very good people who are just looking at their own quality of life that they would, in a perfect world, not have impacted. And if we have offended them or in any way or come up short in working through this with them, they have my apologies and that's so that to them. If I didn't think that this was a need for the district for the very reasons you just outlined and ensuring that our facilities are commensurate to the quality of our programs and are equal with other school districts, because I do think we're so far with this piece of our facilities, I wouldn't be asking for it. It's a major, yes, it's a major sacrifice for their, the quality of life that they look forward to when they purchase those homes in that position. But with all due respect, it's something of some sort that the district has had planned for that plot of land since 1995. So it's not a secret and we'll do everything in the world to be good neighbors. But I do want to say that they're very, they've been very respectful, decent, they're good people. And I wish that we could keep it a half mile from our homes, which is not really.
One more thing, Paul, I've got a diagram that shows, you're a baseball guy. So.
Yeah, baseball, softball.
One good test, like I know Chris drops kids off and I see it, we see, you know, they're driving lightsabers and J-turn or some type of it. But I mean, I want to, I think it's, I don't want to point out the obvious, but like we only have so many stalls, right? I mean, like, so like at any given football, you can't exceed the number of those stalls in those areas. So like during the J-turn, we get a chance to see what it's going to be like every J-turn when they all file at the same time and they all leave at the same time. Because every parking spot does get filled up during that time. And admittedly so, why am I out there? Because Doug says, hey, back up, the Lynch Ford, watch out, you know? And I come out and help out there, especially in the mornings after school, obviously for safety reasons. That was one of the discussions we talked about was more for safety. So as we move forward, I think it is an important communication point that's not just for the major events that we have that for. It would be for school purposes as well because we do see that every one of those spots get filled, you know, filled up. And there, every single spot on our campus is assigned to a kid in our school. You know, so we do, we do have that, it's just a summer curfew that makes it feel lighter on some days and others. So I think it's not just like, I don't think it's just a, hey, there's a football game on a Friday night discussion, you need an access road. I think it's like, do we need one as a school district for what the traffic operation dictates or do we not? I don't think it's like, hey, we're building a complex, you need to put a road in. I think that's an important communication point that we make to everybody along.
I think your point is really well taken. And one of the key elements that I haven't thought about till just now is the pressure on business 30. When you think of, I mean, I remember sitting waiting to turn into Lynch Ford and, you know, looking in my rearview mirror at KW, you know, for Kenworth barreling down on me and not knowing if they were going to slow down or not. Because they would come to a stop at that, before the roundabout, they would come to a stop before they stop. And when it was took their turn to go, it was almost like a drag strip, amber, amber, amber green. And they were putting, putting the pedal down because they wanted to hit 55 when that sign was at 55. We won't have that traffic out there now and it'll change the dynamic. But I don't think we've really seen the impact of that yet because the bypass hasn't been opened that long. So I think, I think the, you know, there's a lot of, a lot of things we still need to learn, but you can't learn them until we move forward. So I think that's great.
One final point, Scott, I think, I would say this, the right people were at the table at that meeting amongst all three entities to be put on them. So nobody moving forward. at that meeting amongst all three entities to be put on the, so nobody moving forward can come back to the city and say they weren't aware of the conversation. So are they aware of the designs? Probably not yet.
Well, but there's only so many options.
Yeah. The north, south, east, west, where not specifically they go, everybody that was sitting at that table understands exactly what was being addressed.
Is Mr. Noss supposed to make his ideas clear? Yes.
Thank you. We have this opportunity, public safety. Doug, Jake, do you have emergency men's, do you guys have anything to add?
We were in the meeting, we had the same discussions. I have no concerns, and I completely agree with the staff's recommendation from the city's perspective on 13th. My biggest concern was the flow of emergency vehicles to allow access, especially the bigger apparatuses, fire trucks and stuff like that. I am, and I have been for the past 20 years, a huge proponent for a north access, a secondary access, for two reasons. My main, the main reason is when we pile a bunch of people into one spot and then you only have one access, everybody's going to try and leave that spot at the same time emergency vehicles are trying to come into that spot. And that'll be a problem from that. And so the secondary accesses and the routes that we take are for that response as well. I think we have to plan for that, we have to be cognizant. Fire trucks are not getting smaller, ambulances are not getting smaller from that standpoint. The city had the forethought in the development of Stone Brook, the streets are wider, and they were intentionally built wider to allow the access and allow parking in those areas. And so I agree completely, I'm comfortable with where we're at. We can temporarily no park it in certain areas to make sure that emergency vehicles are not being delayed if they need to, from that standpoint. I think it's also going to be a popular parking area for the Stone Brook people to gather before the events, hang out with friends, and then go to the event on foot traffic, decreasing the need around the area and stuff like that, too. So I have no concerns and am fully comfortable walking through.
Here it is at Doug's house.
Yeah, there we go.
He won't have anything else going on.
And just to be crystal clear about these access roads, these do not replace the emergency access in the northwest corner.
No.
Okay.
That is, this is the more.
I wanted to just be a hundred percent.
Yeah, this is more situational based to making sure that, for the most part, ambulance will be coming and going from that location. And I believe they have an access point to the track from that location, so they can access the track, drive around and drive opposite.
And most of these events, as we've seen, the football field on First Street, fire and ambulance are usually staged at those events already. So it's going to be a bigger situation if something's going on from that standpoint. Ninety-nine percent of the time, it's probably going to be just fine.
Paul, we also have the foresight to give that property on that northwest side corner near.
I've heard sixty-two weeks ago, so there should be animals outside at all times.
The concern really initially has been the no parking on the internal circle and then for the purposes of a large scale event like we're talking about, the concern has typically been, can we get a fire truck in when people are parking on those access points? And the answer is, it gets pretty scary. Our concern probably when it comes to this specific site is, what if a fire happens at the high school or middle school while a large event is occurring? Given the construction of what's occurring at the athletics complex, I mean, it's less likely to see some sort of fire, more electric or an accident or something of that nature. So we want to ensure that should one of those buildings happen to have an issue, that we can have that access. And controlling the no parking on that interior becomes the imperative situation there. Again, the secondary access should be forthcoming and we'll continue to have a conversation. Ideally, if you were starting from scratch, you wouldn't necessarily deny it this way. But what makes Mount Vernon unique in its compact nature also presents some challenges. And I feel like we've at least come to an agreement that is going to best suit the area, given kind of the cards that we've ever dealt.
No, I would agree, I like the plan, I like, again, back what Dave has said and what Greg has said about these, this being necessary, to Dave's point of personal partners with real estate values, you know, folks are going to want to live really well. You know, I like old houses and, you know.
People don't, they don't live in them, that's why, that's why.
No, and I appreciate the level of detail that we got from Moscow with her to the lady and all that, and the difference between the A and the I. So I'm a huge fan of question marks, but I'm comfortable with the ones we have here.
And I'd like to say thank you as well, first of all, for the vision behind this, for all the work behind it, and especially for what you guys have done in the last few weeks to solidify some things, or at least answer some questions and to go into some details. And it makes me feel a lot better that Doug's been part of that conversation and Jake. So I think it was good.
This is not a resolution, so if the voice will okay. Are we to that point?
I approve approval of the site plan for the Mount Vernon Community School District Athletic Complex.
Is there a second?
We have a second.
Greg, your second?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Greg. Any further questions? Ready to vote a motion, all the paper motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Congratulations on your statement. Thanks, guys. Moving on to J1, claims for approval, but the most recent one that got sent out for today. Any questions? Okay, we move on that.
Approve approval of the council's.
I'll say. Paul and Scott. Ready to vote on the council's, all the paper motion, please say aye.
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 Motion carries. A bunch of hearing time. Dodge Amendment of two.
Nothing really, this is where Sue starts to put her foot down and says, no more. So this is our, typically our last amendment, the meeting right before the end of the fiscal year to take into account any overdues or any revenues that we could have foreseen before the start of the fiscal year. Really is, this is when we put our foot down and say, you have to watch your p's and p's as far as expenditures, so. Yeah, we're just setting the date tonight, you'll get the public hearing and see what amendments are being made through the course of the next couple packets. Because of the necessary public hearing requirements, you would be setting this for May 16th.
I would go ahead and approve, no, move that we set the public hearing for amendment number two to the fiscal year budget 2021, 2022, for the second meeting in May, May 16th.
I'll second that.
I think it's Scott here, Scott's there. And motion approves this, the 16th date for public hearing, date for question number two. Any other questions? Ready to vote on all the paper motion, please say aye.
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 Motion carries. Thank you. Move on to reports. This is Mount Vernon Naval Service. Jake, ready?
Oh. Here. If you guys can get the report to you soon enough, put it in the back.
You did?
All right, so you guys see, I kind of caught up, thanks to the last two weeks, I've kind of been able to dig through the stack of papers on my desk, to catch up on some reports. So you can see, it looks like we're up almost double from last year. It's not the case, we are still up about that ten to fifteen percent on a six-month trend, which is what we've been doing for about the last three to four years, except for 2020 where we were down just a tad. So although alarming, it's not, you know, it's right on track of where we're supposed to be. We're still kind of continuing at that roughly, two call it a average. We are looking at adding some new members from May, so we're hovering on five interviews of the early May, and they'll do some orientation, and then start another truck in June, which will be pretty beneficial for us, because we do have some members who are either graduating or moving on to bigger and better, or, you know, it's just their time to kind of move on. So it's happened with volunteer agencies, so. Otherwise, you guys have any questions for me? I know I haven't been here for any questions lately.
Just out of curiosity, looking at it, what are intercepts?
Intercepts, so that'll be where we send one of our paramedics or ALS providers to meet with another service that doesn't have a paramedic. So we do a lot of them, like mechanics will stand wood. Historically, Clarence was a big utilizer, they just recently went to a paramedic service as well, so they're not calling as often. And it's a great opportunity for us to interface with other agencies as well as for our paramedics to utilize, you know, to their capacity, so.
I was just curious, looking, that one calls is pretty self-explanatory.
Yeah, right.
So, thank you, Jake. Thank you. Thanks for the wonderful service, your group device.
Yeah, I think so.
For Doug, move ahead for yours.
Nothing additional, unless you have questions.
Questions for Doug? Moving to public works, Eldon.
Nothing further, unless you have questions at all.
It's a great time, busy.
Very good. Thanks for being flexible on brush paint, a leaf pickup because of cold and wet, windy part of April, that's a hard time to cover some of that stuff.
We're always at the mercy of mother nature, so.
It was very satisfying to sit at my desk in my second floor and watch the leaves get something.
They got a pretty light thought.
Good. No questions for Eldon?
Parson Rec. Report.
Manhattan Chocolate Walk Meeting, the only thing that he asked me to add was that they are still seeking chocolate walk up in years. If you were interested, please reach out to your Matt or Jill.
Did Waters Edge come to it?
They did.
Excellent.
Well, you say excellent.
I'm glad they were here.
Their report was, I think Eldon said it best, they've seen worse, but it's not great.
Well, yeah. It's not anything but surprising.
We did, there's always.
There was definitely positives there, but there was definitely things that.
He's going to hear everybody.
Are you seeing the Waters Edge is already doing, has already done an evaluation of the curb pool? Is that it? And they say that it's seen worse?
Yes, they have seen worse. They were here today, and they're going to do some core samples of the basin and a few other things. My favorite part of the meeting was the conversation when Chris and Andrews pointed out that we had a water pipe break in the wall and it was coming out one of the sockets. And he goes, oh.
Were they electrical sockets?
Yes. Probably both of those safe thing at the time. Yeah, there are some, there are some interesting, some of the things that we just caught on today are the size of the current lat lane basin and as it relates to diving boards, what necessarily meets today's standards, things of that nature, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, they've seen worse, there's quite a few things wrong, but they.
And I didn't want to start a whole thing, I just, they were just.
Yes, they were here.
It's nice to see them.
I will, I will say I was extremely encouraged, as I was through the interview process, of their knowledge of pool mechanics and, you know, just in their general conversations today, the questions they were asking. Was quite pleased with the information that they were gathering to this point.
Moving forward to a report from Waters Edge, shortly. Any else, any question about Parson Rec.? Moving to discussion items, one solid waste. Chris has all the answers there.
So we have received just shy of 700 responses, which is almost fifty percent, probably about twenty-five percent more than I thought they were going to be getting. We are continuing to send out information, so the recycling information that I provided in the packet, there's one noted change that will likely be made before that gets mailed out to all residences, just to make sure that they have kind of a better understanding of what should be recycled when this rolls out. There will be another flyer that will come specifically when the containers are dropped off. My understanding at this point is they're leaning towards a three-day pickup for Mount Vernon. The truck that they would utilize would actually come and, would be the same truck, they would pick up garbage first, go unload garbage from the route that they were on, and then that truck, same truck would come back and pick up recycling, which goes back to their recycling center. So it's kind of an interesting process, makes a lot of sense to us. But in order to do that with one, one truck and make it feasible, they're likely have to break the city up into a three-day pickup. We are trying to stick to the quadrants or have them stick to the quadrants, so they're cognizant of that as well. The individual that creates the routes was here last week and talked to Meredith for a period of time, so we're getting closer on that. Commercial accounts are still going to be a case-by-case basis, so there's that information out there. Some of the other things that the council will need to consider here before July 1, we had this conversation when we were discussing solid waste in general, but currently, we allow individuals that are going to be gone for three months or more, or what we consider snowbirds. So if you're going to be gone for three months or more, we allow you to pause your services. We would even know from a council perspective if that is something that you want to continue. You do not have to obviously make decisions tonight, but.
So you're saying currently, we allow that?
We do.
So if somebody's going to Arizona for three months, we allow them to like stop water?
And most of them will turn their water off.
Right, they're going to turn their water off, but like the 1050 wastes were kind of blanking out. You're.
Yeah, but they also are controlling it because they just don't have to buy the tax rate.
To a certain extent, yes, they're not utilizing.
And so who polices that? Because we can stop charging them, $10.50. We didn't have to police the fact that they're not putting stuff up if they did that because they were still paying for the tax.
Correct. I mean, ideally, from a staff perspective, just from ease of purposes, allowing this makes it more challenging for us. However, it is a practice that hasn't been allowed before in the past.
And maybe, so if I'm understanding Craig's question correctly, is there some interface where somebody calls Meredith and says, I'm going to be gone for three months, and she somehow communicates that address to Republic, and then they know that there should be.
Yes, Republic is agreeing not to bill us for that address. So theoretically, they should know whether or not they're picking up that address, because we are telling them where and we're not to bill. It's not, I don't want it to seem like it's an insurmountable number of people that take advantage of this. And the reason for the three-month minimum is, anything less than that makes it more challenging to take it, put it, take it off the bill and put it back on. So if you're what we consider a true snowbird and you're going to be gone for three months, it's probably worth the staff time to make that effort. If anything less than, it's really not. I, you know, I've heard opinions, vast opinions, on how they feel about this program or not. Those that take advantage of it would like it to remain, and those that do not question vitality of such programs. So, you know, again, food for thought, these are kind of points that hopefully would make a news article and people would reach out to you and let you know how they feel.
So just a quick question on the water, if they shut off the water, they still pay the minimum?
There's a minimum fee, so I think the minimum, I want to say it's like $35 that you can pay per month or something of that nature. They pay a minimum charge to the city, but they don't pay all the additional surcharges.
Right, okay. Thank you.
Chris, I'm curious to know, the 700 that you received, how many people?
Chris, I'm curious to know with a 700 that you received, how many people also said they were interested in the yard waste pickup? Of course Eldon hasn't asked this question.
You know, actually, that's a good question only in that I feel like it's been a been a benefit to the city because we've been able to educate people about the public drop that they're going to Brian. We've actually discouraged quite a few residents from taking it. Unless you use it on a weekly basis where you're filling a container on a weekly basis, you have that much yard waste. We're suggesting that if they have the means to take it out to Bryant, that they just simply give them the sale and save the, save money.
Which was super convenient. I even did that for the first time like two weeks ago.
Yes.
And it was, it was nice.
Plus you can pick up some compost by your aspect. So I would say, I don't have a specific percentage for you, Stephanie, but I would say it's pretty minimal. Most of the individuals that we talked to, I would say we actually kind of talked out of getting it. And again, most of them said, oh, hey, now that we can do that. Now that we have the camera out there and we're able to kind of monitor if people are coming and going from there, it makes it easier to have more access.
So most of the calls that I've fielded about yard waste is what's going to happen when we do this change? And I said, I'm not really sure how Republicans are going to do yard waste. However, we do have this option. And then I explained it to them and they're like, oh, I didn't even know about that. That's great. And I'm going to take advantage of that. So I think we're still in the education process of getting people to know about that option. So.
Well, until, I mean, to Chris's point, until we got the cameras out there, it'd have been on the dollar. So we intentionally didn't advertise it.
I would say most of it's been relief. I think there was a slight confusion on whether or not we were going to continue to pick up leaves. If they didn't pick the yard waste, if we were not going to pick up leaves, then they were curious as to how they would handle that. Once they found out that the $10.50 charge covered portions of their leaf pickup, then quite a few people just said, oh, I'm not interested. So.
I'm surprised we got 700 back because frankly, you didn't have to return it if you didn't want to make any changes.
That, that's kind of. That's kind of how we felt. We figured a lot of people would fall back to the 65s and just.
Yeah.
There were a lot of individuals and Meredith could probably attest to this in case you talked to quite a few of them that stopped in the city hall to check out the container sizes and make a sound decision for them, which I thought was great. And it gives us an opportunity to talk about, the 35 gallon container is now at city hall. You can see by looking at it why it becomes problematic. It's a skinnier version of the 65 gallon. The claws that they use to pick these up and actually tip them on the automated systems. Do you very good at picking up 65 and 95 because they're similar in girth? But with a skinny 35, that's where they start losing them when they dump them. The good news is this is supposed to be a front load unit. So it doesn't like pick it up and then take it all the way up and drop it into the hopper where a driver would have to get out, climb all the way into the hopper to get out and it goes into the front compartment. And so if it does happen to fall out, he'll only have to worry about that front compartment before he.
But why, since I was there here in October, why is it every other week for the 35? Is it a special truck?
Well, to be honest with you Craig, it's almost as a, it was a discouraging tool.
I think that that's the comment that the email that we all got from one of our citizens said is discouraging people from doing the 35, making them pay more. And that's how they, that's how they look at it.
Yeah, and understanding that the complication is just that. So what I would tell individuals, you know, it's, they purchase the same truck and they have the same, or have the same expenses coming per week. The 35 gallons, like I said, if you couple the every other week, which is what we ask for, simply because we have a number of residents that at the time that we were talking about bidding this out, said I only use a couple of tags per month. Well, the only way to get that dollar amount, that monthly amount down to half was to go to every other week. And realizing individuals are still unhappy about that, it is a discouragement. You know, ideally you would only have the two size variations and it would be picked up every week. But it was, I think at the time, the best way moving forward with the city as far as providing a cheaper monthly model.
Yep. I understand. Thank you.
One question I've gotten, and I know we discussed it at one point, I don't recall if we came to a decision or not, but were tags people already have that will last them beyond July 1?
I, I will tell you that I didn't, not intend to put words into your mouth, but Denny did stop and said, if I purchase these, will you buy them back if I have extras? And I said, that is the understanding that I am going to operate under unless I'm told differently, is that we would purchase the tags back. Otherwise, everybody is going to completely slow down on their purchase of tags. And yeah. So I think unless you tell me otherwise, the idea would be to purchase the tags back.
We understand Denny though, like you.
Yes, he.
So folks could bring them this year all of July.
There are a couple that will purchase them for their children for like six months.
My dad's got nervous tags every Christmas for the last four years. He does. It's not.
Yeah, I think, again, it's I think the lady in the office would not be as happy about it as I would because they won't have to issue the refunds. But I think that's the only fair way to do this. Either that or you essentially eliminate the tag program for the last month and a half. Pursue really for post-COVID and dracous. I prefer not to go that route.
That would just land more confusion.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The other thing that, you know, that I want you to think about in we've had a little modern income program in which we've given tags to individuals that meet those income thresholds. That is going to be more challenging moving forward in that the residents that typically take advantage of that, a lot of times are renters. We have individuals that live in the local home court, for instance, and in that scenario, the owners or the landlords typically control the waste decisions. In the case of the local home court, they pay for it. So we won't have no way to subsidize low modern income individuals in the local home court, for instance, because we would inadvertently be subsidizing the owners of the local home court.
So how does, how does it work now?
We give them tags.
We give them tags, yeah.
And that's the big difference. By giving them the tags, they can put tags on their average and get rid of their items. Moving forward, we will have that ability because again, the owners of the court are going to be charged whether or not they take a roll-off container or they give each and one container.
So right now for the, for the local home court, do we send just one big water bill and one big?
There's a master water meter. And then the individual meters on each of the units are private. All of the lines within the local home court are private. So we send one bill.
And then they charge the individuals.
They charge the individuals.
In the 700 return surveys, what was the number of small bins asked for? Because I know Matt was concerned about having enough to meet that.
Oh, I think he meant, I think the percentage is probably a little higher than what he was expecting. I, I think he expected out of the 1,400 or so accounts that probably 100 to 150 would request the 35 and I would say is at least there.
So isn't it about the bins?
Um, yes. I think there are already, you saw the struggle just to get the one bin here for people to view. They're having to go to different vendors. So Kevin indicated to me that he wouldn't, but we're still dealing with issues on supply.
Educational thing part, a lot of this is educational, but educational part of this needs to be that we need to recycle clean. There's a lot of other decisions that need to be made here, but to avoid loads from Mount Vernon that get checked and end up going to the landfill with their other loads of recyclable materials, starts in every individual household to make sure that they recycle clean at that point of contact. And the new program, the new bins, with new billing system and so on, hopefully our citizens will get that message and recycle clean so that they truly can dispose materials to the recycling center and not just another truck to landfill. May 21st, 9:12, it's my plan to be in the city hall. The bins are there. And I'm sure I'll have a list of things that are total items at that point. That's fine, but I think I need to address it right off the top and see what other questions might come out. So.
Would have you were having something at Chocolate Walk as well?
No, I didn't. I didn't debate that, but or cleanup day. I literally did not do that, but I thought about it.
So many of the visitors are to town. It's already crowded.
Yeah, historically, Taco Walk has tried to prevent, I think, but I'll consider solicitation or anything of that nature. I would continue with the May 21st, the number of flyers that are getting sent out. I will say based upon the responses on the toller request forms that everyone seems to be keenly aware of the fact that they're making the change. So it shouldn't surprise me.
I like the content of flyers. I mean, they're easy to read and everything. And my question is going to be, how are you guys going to distribute those?
I think we'll do mass mailing similar to what we did with the toller survey. It's just.
I think that's great.
That's a few weeks out, everyone's out?
This particular flyer could probably go out in the next couple of weeks.
And I have post PDFs on the website.
Yes.
Do you think that when the flyer goes out, we're going to have an answer to the question of where we're going to put minimally at last recycle bin, Mount Vernon or Recycle?
So I can kind of answer that question right now. Although I'm not even going to look that direction. He's going to dagger me with his eyes, but where you pick up compost and things of that nature out of the public works site is probably going to be the most logical. We had originally talked about putting it out in the swimming pool parking lot back in the corner where we put the dumpsters during the dracio. However, my concern is, is.
Broken glass.
Broken glass and kids running around with sandals and things of that nature. So
Yeah.
It's not ideal to put it out public works if people are driving in and out as well. But I think, you know, I would issue a warning, I guess, to those that are using it. Staff would continue to recommend having a place to put glass as long as it didn't become extremely problematic. And we have a camera out there. So that's kind of our, our way of saying we can, we can see what's going on out there. But if it becomes problematic, it'll be something that has to be readdressed by the city council at that point. I will say the cameras are effective. We did catch some town individuals building a mulker out of our public works site.
Digging.
Digging, hand digging a mulker.
Shenanigans.
It's just going to be self-explanatory.
Actually, you know, there wasn't any Alice.
They just found something and digged it?
Yeah, and they were. So, but because of the technology that we have out there, the fact that we can see people coming in and out here just probably makes the most sense. We already have a concrete pad. The question will be whether or not there's another service that provides these locations, whether or not it's a public or this other company.
It's going to be imperative to ask for it to be clean.
Yes.
Because it will attract rodents, animals, bugs.
The other thing too is, is glass recycling, out of all of them, have to be cleaned. There's only like one manufacturing company that can take it right now and if it's dirty, they just don't take it.
I'm looking at how basically going for Chris, that multi-eyed, multi-eyed pick-up will probably fall. That there's still maybe a need for tags if you want to set out like appliance or something like that, something that's kind of out of the norm. So there's that 100% ban and it can be very, very miserable. And that anything we can do at this time to encourage automatic payments, I know that may be tied in with the website redesign and payment system on there, but anything that can help citizens, especially this new and incoming young citizens to just pay on the phone or pay something other than dropping off a check at city hall. That would be great to have happen. And.
Chris, bulk pickup pickup. I know it was, you know, pickup day was in the contract. Have you guys talked at all about what that's going to be? I think you were thinking it's fall.
It will be fall this year, just simply given the fact that they don't start until July 1.
Right.
It will move back to the spring to line up as soon as we can. The other thing that after the initial multi-eyed pickup, people will be allowed to put out, I believe, once a month, bulkier items. They just have to be able to be picked up by eight individuals because there's only one person that is driving trucks. And there are appliances and things like that that are not allowed. So my hope is that some of the items that you would normally put out in a multi-eyed pickup, you can start putting out throughout the year as well. So that should help. But yeah, it's been three years, four years, I think since we've been able to host one. So.
Anything else on solid waste? Hard to go with sport. Next item, council communication. I put that on there a couple of reasons. First of all, because I have a council member, Craig Abel. Second of all, I have new disposition and I'll get a little bit of experience to decide how we're going to operate as appropriate. I have five questions to address and they may be easy. They may need a lot of discussion here, but who sets the agenda? I think legally I need to. I put a lot of credit to Chris who does 99% of this, but past practices give, and Paul, you can correct me if I'm wrong here, but if two council members think they want to present items, get it on the agenda, something else you that that would be something that would be communicated to myself or to Chris. Is that an acceptable practice? Obviously if the.
Yes.
And I would just offer that the mayor still has the discretion as to what agenda it goes on or it doesn't and have that discussion with those council members.
Good point. This is because just my, if you came on this council's agenda early on and didn't agenda what it is, the question.
Right.
I have to ask myself that in hindsight here, but.
So if one council member comes to you, in my opinion, and you feel that it's relevant for a one council member, that's your decision. And your discretion to be able to act that is, I don't know that there, has there ever been a rule of at least two?
I think the.
I don't remember that, I guess.
Well, so I would say when it comes to council items to keep the agendas somewhat clean, if there wasn't at least getting close to a majority of individuals interested in having that conversation, then then typically it did get put on there. It would become more of a one-on-one meeting and that council person or the mayor or that council person in my office or whatever department had needed to be involved. But I think the goal was to ensure that individual items, I hate to use the word dead projects, but things that were near and dear to just one individual got put on the agenda that didn't have the support of multiple council. were near and dear to just one individual got put on the agenda that didn't have the support of multiple council members because it's going to go absolutely nowhere. Or I have a conversation with you, like, I don't know if we've ever thought about that, we could put it on as a discussion item and see if there's support and support with the potential. So the addition of discussion items, I think, has kind of paved the way for, you know, a council person to at least have a conversation with the mayor and say, we talked about it.
From a historical perspective, a lot of times, it really doesn't need to be brought to council at the end of the day. When that council member has the discussion with Chris, it can be, you know, figures are resolved by staff because they really don't rise to a council level. The other benefit to having that control in the mayor's hand is you make sure that an issue is fought out, researched by that individual prior to the meeting, not just thrown out for a, hey, somebody asked me this, you know.
Yeah.
Agreed.
Yeah.
Agreed.
I think that control's important. The other place that it becomes very important is when the mayor and the city administrators sit down and look at an agenda, sometimes based upon priority, some things just have to wait till another meeting because of the work that is, needs to be done right now. So I think that, that's why, I think that's the reason the code is written the way it is, that the mayor sets the agenda as a gatekeeper.
Yeah, no, I'd never disagree with that. That's the way I understood. It was just the two people coming to you, I didn't know, I didn't remember that.
Good discussion, good background. Reply to all function. We get emails from citizens. What first question there is, some entities, I think City House School Board is one of them, where no one on the school board, except, I don't know, maybe the person with the school district can reply to that, even though, and that's their practice. I have, my feeling is that if somebody sends one, an email, a legitimate email to all council members, that I'd like to respond, at least to say that thanks for your concern, I'm sure we'll put it on the discussion item or whatever. But the, I don't think I want to limit interactions with council members, especially recognizing, like, you're Facebook, but you're, I want to recognize the value of the communication through that source and not have that communication.
I have a clarifying question. Are you talking about emails that are sent out from city staff or from a council?
From citizens, asking, you know, why are you doing this practice?
The question.
So citizen to council.
To council members.
And then, so you're saying that Limar, there's one person that replies to that, whereas right now, we're all free and reply as we can.
And I think we're all smart enough to not overcommit or to put Chris in that position, or to say, I totally support you. Scott Stephanie, you're wrong on that issue, we would have discussed earlier.
So my wife might disagree with me, but that's another.
I agree with you, Tom. I think, you know, we got one recently from Lord Cranston as an example, and I just responded to her and said, thanks for your input, Lori, because I just wanted her to know that I acknowledged it, that I saw it. You know, and then I did appreciate that she provided the input.
And so if Stephanie had not done that, how do we ensure that Lori or somebody, other citizen gets responded to? Because the worst thing that could happen is that there's no response.
Yeah.
So, and this is kind of the point that came up. Sometimes this happens, and it has happened since I've been here. They will email you and not email me. And so if they email all of us, I will typically respond and reply all so that the same communication happens to everybody.
So we know what we said.
Exactly.
Makes sense.
There has been on occasion where I've been asked by a council member, hey, did you respond to that? So I'm like, I have no idea what you're talking about. I would say the best litmus test is if an individual emails you as a council person on your own, you're free to communicate back and forth with that citizen. If they send an email to the entire council, then my preference would be, especially if it's something that you think I would have knowledge on, that you allow me or my staff to respond, to answer their questions, and we will always respond all. In light of that, it doesn't hurt to email them directly and just acknowledge the fact that you read their correspondence. What you want to try to prevent, obviously, is, you know, what is considered ex parte communication on an item that is on an intended or something like that. So everybody that is at the table, I think, has a clear understanding on where, when communication is going too far.
So I can think of a scenario fairly recently where someone sends out an email, and I saw that person like within a week later, I'm like, hey, did you ever hear back that anybody responded? And the answer was no. It kind of surprised me. I didn't respond because I didn't know the answer. And I mean, I can circle back to the circumstances, but I think that it's all been resolved, it's not a big issue. But that's an example where, you know, I don't like the fact that they didn't get a response from anybody at that time.
All right, so that's what we're solving here, and so what we've decided is that if it's to an individual council person, we can provide, we respond individually. If it's to all of the council members, we will respond if we choose to copy everyone so that they, so that we all know that there has been a response. And we have to make sure that Chris is in the loop, because there was one that came to the entire council that I was referring to, Tom, and I talked to you, that I don't think went to Chris.
That happens more frequently than not, so.
That seems to be something that we could put a procedure in place on, that none of us is responsible for.
Yeah.
You know, we see you're not included.
Always talking Chris.
Well, I was gonna say, ideally, if you do not say the mayor's name on the email, I mean, I would rely on Tom to let me know that.
That's what I was gonna say, makes the most sense.
Low was your one, maybe six emails.
Yes, I, if you don't see a response from me in 24 hours, it's because it got caught up in our firewall and I didn't see it, or I wasn't included.
Well, that might be the case with this one where there was no response. That might be the case.
Because I will typically, even when I'm on vacation, respond within 24 hours, or have somebody from my staff do the same, just to acknowledge the information.
Because, you know, that one circumstance happened, and like I said, that might have been the issue, is that you weren't included. But honestly, I haven't, I haven't seen very little that I feel like were, and you were always very responsive to people.
You know, you put on the route of the floating meeting where Stephanie has an issue, she emails a couple of people, and they agree that I agree with you, Stephanie, let's vote this way on this issue, the getting around public discussion and the public voting and things like that, that part of replying to.
That's the part.
So all the deliberations by that route, being sensitive to the floating meeting council, it's probably the terminology for it. Moving these back to City Hall. The question came up, we have the technology out here, we have the space out here, we have the party out here. At the time we left City Hall, this might be news for some of you, but there was discussion about doing some updates to City Hall with not any accessibility for the upper level, the car maintenance placement. I was, I'm pretty content being out here, and as long as, I don't know if it's okay with doing the technology, which is built in right now, or at least in the short term, are we gonna be okay being out here? Does anybody have an opinion about that, one way or the other?
I think that we're going to.
Was there a plan?
Well, eventually, we should have, if this project moves forward, we'll have to move back to City Hall. I think ideally, what's going to occur right now is that we would bid this in the fall, correct? We're gonna, the current plan is to bid this in the fall.
Correct.
So if we bid it in the fall, construction ideally starts late fall, early winter here, then we would have to move back to City Hall at that time. My hope is, because the fall leading into winter, once we pick up is done, I mean, what we were talking about at City Hall is a fresh load paint, removing the non- compliant ADA requirements of the dials up front, and then upgrading technology, and then more comfortable chairs, I think. Something similar to what we have out of the O C. We weren't really talking anything monumental. The technology is going to be the most expensive part, and it really kind of depends on what you want to do. I do not believe that we're ever going to necessarily move away from the Zoom feature. I see no reason to do that. So having something put up on a wall that you do not have necessarily turn or chairs to grab to see would be ideal. Similar to the conference table, conference room that we have out there right now, and there's two cover TVs. So there's some technology purchases, wouldn't happen until after the next fiscal, start of the next fiscal year anyway, but I would likely turn public works leaves on days that they were not able to do anything else on painting the interior white. Like I said, nothing drastic for this. But, you know, once this gets underway, this will all be under construction. I can talk to Chief Shannon on what types of technology can be moved, or what technology is going to stay and be utilized in this training facility when it's completed as well. So I think ideally we stay here until we get prepped to make renovations to this building, and then we get back to City Hall to see if we're able to spread out.
Sounds good. We're here for at least the next six months, and thanks for this discussion about all these items with regard to communication. Hopefully Greg feels more comfortable, and I think we all have a pretty good idea of where we have in mind, council intercommunication. Insurance updates, Mr. Chris?
I'm gonna keep this quick. We were able to get it down to 15%, and let that win. They are moving us to, we're kind of considered a universal Blue Cross windshield, and there is a change. Has more to do with how Blue Cross windshield is able to negotiate rights from hospitals in each individual state. Our policy and the fact of how our employees see it, out of pocket, deductive, that nature stays the same. On the backside, it's just a little bit different.
Question about insurance. Reports, various report. I mentioned three things. I took a new attorney on the Kirkwood campus at this point. Had the tour with the new director, whose name I don't remember right now, but that was pretty impressive, and hopefully I'll address that. And the third thing was, is I had an informational meeting with the Czech Museum in a couple of days on long-term waste management with the landfill site, which is tapped to be completed in 2044, and even alternative doctors in 2042 or 2044. So a educational meeting there. Council reports, any, can you report? Is there a date yet on Councilor's next meeting? Has it been announced?
Yes.
May 16th.
May 16th?
Yes.
That's our council meeting.
Laura sent out a meeting. I think it's the week of that council meeting. I will have a recent.
Yeah, it's in May, maybe it's the 17th.
I mean, it's just that, there's also my birthday, I'm not wanting to meetings on my. Gotta draw the lines.
Let's do a date comparison here. Okay, well, that's the question I had about, that of community. Community reports, did you hear this? Trade, I'm sorry.
Well, I was just gonna say, Community Development Group, a few things that they went through, some of the main goals that they have. They are looking for three new board members. So if you know of anybody that is interested in being involved with Community Development Group, please have a conversation with them and/or Joe, Jensen. They are also looking for a board president of the board members. So if you know anybody on the current board, give them some encouragement. It's an important role, obviously. The second goal they had is to have the pocket park done by Chalkamal. And last I heard, Dale Merrill was finishing up the seating, so that's great. They're going to have two entrepreneurs at events each year. They want to have the exercise trail at the LBC, you know, the equipment out there before June, and that was again, some of the money that came from the Stop Smoking, where they won $50,000 out of culture given, yeah. And they encourage some people to attend the active shooter training because of, you know, events and the importance of.
That's a Sunday afternoon community festival.
Yes.
Like the active shooter training, specific to.
Yeah, and then I'll be headed to Des Moines on Friday night to attend Joe and some other CG members to receive one of the awards for the two communities that were in the NAMSA top eight. Looking forward to that, Bill.
Mayor, Laura reported the Confluence meeting is May 17th at 6:30 PM, right here.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Laura.
Craig just let me know that his power ran out, so he's trying to reset.
This will be, this will be.
I don't feel sorry for him.
Laura.
Craig just let me know that his power ran out, so he's trying to reset. I don't feel sorry for him.
And he also spoke flowers, Council reports, then administration report.
Really, just on that, I kind of wanted to point out, Tom Rieth did four days, had four days for donating the four trees that were lost in Duratio in the downtown. We're waiting on one tree to show up on the shipment, and as soon as we do, then those will be planted. Goal, obviously, to have them all handled by Chalkamal. And the second, again, if you happen to see Derek, Derek Page around town or any of the county supervisors, thank them for the many dollars worth of sewer work that we'll be able to do in our community.
Where are you thinking?
Yeah, talking about staff. We have been incredibly lucky as far as money for projects, custom them. How we are able to manage them all, so we're excited and scared at the same time.
Ben was out, Ben Rogers was out for the fartman's, thank you, thank you very much. And I was picking myself, because I forgot to mention it, so I emailed him immediately afterwards. He got back to me, but yeah. Well, he's an old ambulance guy.
Yeah. His dad.
Are you saying he's old?
You know what he's saying, he's a disgusting.
I want you to.
By the way, that pancake practice was really good. It was great to see all the community happening.
I think I heard that Red Lion was ready to start installing, but they had to wait for its scooter to be done.
Well.
So the market's not gonna be available.
Yes, so they informed staff that they would need use of the entire northern portion of our parking lot, which means we would have to close the facility because the west half of our parking lot is taken up by students. So we informed him that that wouldn't happen. He would have to wait until school got out. And he's still waiting on, we still have to get our conditioning equipment issued to us for both this facility, for ground maintenance system, so. Great company, enjoy working with Terry. I want to disagree on ideas.
Which of the options do you prefer now?
If you could just start back here, there's nothing holding back this installation. I think you can start back here, there's nothing holding you back from this installation.
Just like the flex in, just like the initial experiments. But yes, they can do both locations. And we were giving up some temporary locations where they could set up as well.
Any other reports we need to address before we go to close session? On my tip of the hat, this meeting was going to be to the fire department for the 1,550 people they fed in the town. Yes, last Saturday, that needs to be a calendar for festivals in the.
He had a drive to relay this.
I saw that, can you believe that?
No.
Anything else that needs to come before this board? Then I will close this meeting to start with and then we'll go to, uh, close session there. And then this meeting is officially adjourned.